Chairman.
Welcome back to our Monday morning of May twenty seventh. Next up on our agenda is our road and bridge presentation with an action item. Steve, do you want to go first?
Yeah, this is added to our existing grant we had from the Boise National Forest with a total of twenty-four thousand one hundred twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents.
That's awesome.
So this grant or this is adding nineteen thousand four hundred fifty-seven mainly to be working on some fire money. For bear money, which was a part of the goat fire, the snag, now I am the bulldog fires.
What will be your responsibility there, Steve? I mean, that's just a huge footprint. So where do you spray? You know, the weeds or is it just as they are identified?
Well, mostly firstly, some of these new fires, we're going in there to identify some of the areas. Any place there's disturbed ground or the cut roads. So a lot of that time we'll be just going in and inventory and some of the noxious weeds that we find. Mainly we'll just be on our UTVs checking out the area and evaluating it for infestations.
But not necessarily spraying it right now.
Well, there should be some, but a lot of it too will combination of spraying and we'll GPS some of the spots too. So it's a lot of ground to cover. Some areas we can't get into yet, but yeah, a lot of it is for the inventory of noxious weeds or potential sites.
I'd say you could be hundreds and hundreds of acres, so.
Thousands of acres.
Hundred thousand acres, two hundred thousand acres.
But mainly what we're looking at is the access roads and you know, the fire lines and cat lines and stuff like that. So anywhere where the soil was disturbed, we're going to go in and look and then treat it if necessary. And even evaluate areas that might be of concern for next year or the following season too.
With everything else on your plate, you've still got time to do this work?
I think so. But what I wanted to ask while I was here is it is a lot of extra work. We may need to ask for some overtime mainly for our three new seasonals overtime. And then we'll get two full-time people. We might have to increase on comp time too. So we don't have to make a decision today, but I think we will need the overtime hours.
So Clerk Miller, can you answer for me? We've got this money coming in. This would normally go into the general fund. Is that acceptable to be able to? Put some of those funds toward overtime or is that just going to be over budgeted?
We're gonna have to reopen the budget. Madam Chairman, I do think we'll have to potentially have another public hearing just to make sure that it's transparent of what the county is in fact doing. If it is going to be increasing the budget specifically for overtime, then yes, I do think that it would require reopening of the budget.
And it's all reimbursable.
Yeah, it's all reimbursable. And that's what I was trying to to figure out though, because sometimes reimbursement will come into one fund. Expenses go out of the other fund and so we need to make those things area up.
I know we have to have that money in there before we can spend it to be reimbursed for it.
Okay. All right. If you'll work with the clerk then and getting that taken care of. I've never been part of a reopening a budget, so. You will be able to tell us how to do that. All right.
So this just requires the chairman's signature on it?
That we approve the modification of the grant, the service grant.
Second.
I moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
And there will be our health and welfare grant. Hopefully we'll have it on the next commissioners session. And then we got another one coming up for the Frank Church River of No Return, MOU. We've probably won't do much work on the Frank because it's so far away, but they just wanted our support on that as well. So it's the Frank Church one will be a no, no money. It's just so we can have cooperative agreements. We can go help if we need to.
Weed management area type thing?
I'm sorry?
A weed management area type thing?
Exactly. Yeah. It's the Frank Church CWA project. With Lemhi, Custer, Idaho County, Valley County.
Now that touches a few of us, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I'd say have fun, but I don't know if that sounds like that much fun.
Not to me. For the younger guys, maybe, but.
Yeah.
And that's all I had unless I can answer any questions.
When will you start checking for mosquitoes?
Last week. We've already set traps. Still getting a few numbers, but full bore this week. We'll probably have five or six traps set out this week. But yeah, we started, actually started about two weeks ago.
And then we have mosquitoes here. Let's just hope there's no west Nile with it.
Mosquito traps. I've never heard of mosquito traps.
Yeah.
Well, you've been approving them for two years.
It's like a skunk. I can see a skunk trap. We had a skunk in our front yard this morning, but.
It checks for the type of mosquito that carries west Nile.
Yeah, the chytridus brusalis.
So that's what it's for.
I can't even say that word, so.
It took me a while.
Do, do you think it's going to be a bad grasshopper year still?
Well, I've been wrong for the last five years, but it all depends on if it continues like we are, yes. If we get some rain and some cold temperatures, it might hold them back a little bit. But yeah, we're overdue for a grasshopper invasion.
I just thought it's going to be ninety on Saturday and then it's going to dive back down to fifty, so.
That'll help. Help a lot.
Rain would be good. Of course, that's when I come back. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need signature? Just getting a signature put on it.
So this is your.
And then I brought another copy. I think you guys got a copy of the claim totals.
We did and it was a different, totally different reports this time, so it was kind of interesting.
This is the corrected claims totals. Have to be different from my report ones as well.
Thank you.
Lower.
I don't think I have to sign this one. We already signed that one.
No, you have to sign the print. Here's the bottom where it says.
Somewhere?
You're not the chairman, so.
See, it really didn't. Oh, I see the little goober. Okay.
Yeah, look for the goober and sign next to it.
Guess I should put my glasses on, huh? Got this back?
Nope, that's yours.
Oh, thank you.
So you can look at the difference.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right.
Sorry, Dan.
No, that's all right. No problem. Uh, so just to give you kind of an update, what's going on? Epstein Bridge. So the Epstein Bridge bid documents came in on Sunday. So we're planning to advertise it, working with Doug. Towards the end of next month, we'll have a bid opening. So hopefully all goes well and we can get it awarded. So that one has been a long time coming.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
I don't even want to drive across that bridge someday. I'm tired of hearing about the Epstein.
Yeah, it's kind of an interesting one.
Where's it physically located at?
It's just right there in Yellow Pine on, on the upper side of the, of the river that it crosses.
Oh, yeah.
It's just kind of right outside of town.
That's what's called the Epstein Bridge. Okay.
Yeah. The other thing last, it was last Tuesday bids were supposed to be opened for the Little Bee Project. This is the one that LTAC administered. It's going to fully pay the contractor, so there, there's no requirement of us for it. Unfortunately, something happened with the, the website and contractors couldn't receive the information. So they, or they couldn't submit their information.
Oh, my goodness.
They got it, but they couldn't submit it in time. So they have to rebid it. So just know that this is our culverts that we're going to line at the Willow Creek, Mud Creek. And then we're going to do a bridge rehab on the Gold Fork. Uh, hopefully that will, I don't know if they need, probably need another three weeks for it to go through advertisement. So just know that hopefully we'll get this thing awarded.
Guess we made it through spring without major issues over there.
Yeah. It's just, it's on the state's system for the bridge replacements and improvements.
Just like the S bridges on the replacement.
Well, some people would say yes, some people would say no. The state says no.
You can try though.
Let's see, four quarters. This is, this has been a long time coming. So the four quarters grant we received.
Nice.
So we got it approved finally. How long have I been here? Almost a year. When did I start with it? Right day one. So.
Under our world.
So we're going to do a little kickoff scoping meeting with FEMA to ensure that we follow the applications and believe me.
Don't do anything outside of.
So Doug, please pass on our. You know, really, we couldn't have done it without Ken and really Ken was a pivotal person to usher this one through. So he's, he's on it and I really appreciate.
How much was the grant?
It was, I think it's about three hundred thousand, so not a whole lot, but it'll, it'll help.
Awesome. Awesome.
See what else here? So the other thing I wanted to mention, so the new building. So they broke ground. They've, we've got a swimming pool out there.
We didn't have shovels on the ground. The hard hat's on.
Oh, sorry.
Some gold shovels. Man, we could have made that.
Sorry about that. I didn't know that was a requirement. So there is a swimming pool out there right now. So they dug out all the material. We have Atlas going in and doing the geotech testing of it. So in, I'm hoping by the end of the week, we'll have it filled up and they'll be ready to start the building at that point.
Just groundwater has come up?
Uh, I think they're going to be, that I did not hear any groundwater issues out there.
I'm just thinking it's full of water.
Well, it's a swimming pool, but it's not full of water at this point.
A little bit of groundwater came up out of it, probably. It's pretty deep, isn't it?
It was, I think it was only eight, just a few feet above the groundwater there. And then, let's see, we've got Lake Shore Drive. This is the Western Federal Lands Project who met with their team. It seems like last week or it might have been two weeks ago. I can't remember now. But they went ahead and surveyed it all. We met with them, walked the project for about an hour. We essentially identified that there could be some potential cost savings on our side that could help extend the length of Lake Shore, which really what it means is that we would line a lot of those culverts that we wanted to replace. So we're going to probably do that as a separate standalone project. You could either do it before or after, it doesn't matter, of, of Lake Shore. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to extend a little bit further out. I believe it was about a six million dollar grant, which includes everything. So not just construction, but design work. So that will be good once we get that one closer and then we can, I think they'll do public informational meetings. So everybody will be aware of what's happening.
So Dan, how do they, I know Jeff's probably told me before and I've never really understood, how do they reline a culvert? I mean.
It's they just put a, a smaller sized culvert inside her and then, and then grout it. They have like a special machine that grouts it and so it fills it up on the way out.
The plastic one?
Uh, yeah, I think it, I think it is a plastic pipe that goes in and replaces.
Questions I have on that is that culvert was sized with a specific intent? So with all of these liners, you're reducing the size of the culverts?
In that, yeah, specific area, it's only the backwater from the lake, so it doesn't have to worry about any velocity or volume.
It's coming from the other direction. Oh, I follow you.
Warren Wagon Guard Rail Project. This is the safety project through LTAC. We are, we essentially went through the process of selecting a consultant, so they're scoping it out right now. So hopefully we'll get started on the design of the replacement of those guard rail.
We have a contractor yet?
No, uh, no, this, so for LTAC projects, you have to design it before it goes into construction. So this is one that will be designed by a consultant that LTAC will help administer that consultant.
But then this one just have X amount of money that could only go as far as contractor can go?
But, but it's federal funds, so you have to follow the federal process with going through a bidding process.
I see. Okay.
But the idea, the idea behind it is that we're going to try to do fixed price variable quantity, which then could extend the length of the, of the guard rail.
Okay. Cool.
Okay. And then a couple other items here. So we've got that Lake Irrigation District Public Meeting for the Carefree Area. This is where they're going to essentially pipe the irrigation. I believe they came last time and, and so we asked them to go ahead and do an actual public hearing for it. So they.
So they're doing a public meeting, not coming to us for a public hearing?
No, correct. They're doing it on their own because that's what we asked them to do. So that.
We asked Jeff to have them come in front of us, but we'll accept that.
Oh, okay.
He was supposed to come and tell me what.
They, they were here that day. So I, I mean, technically I brought it up and maybe I did, I wasn't being fully transparent and open with them to, to.
So do you know, so what they're telling people is that they have an easement? And my understanding is that they're using our easement.
They, no, they, I mean, the majority of what they're piping is their easement. There's a few sections along our roadway that they want a permit from us to do that work. I don't see any issue with them allowing them to do work within our right of way. And so their, their meeting is June fourth between four and six. My plan is to attend the meeting. And I believe Cindy said that she was planning also to attend the meeting, so.
I was going to, but I will not be here, so. I just have had complaints coming out of Carefree. I was just trying to clarify what easements they actually had.
It's probably a little confusing because, you know, people don't realize that there's multiple easements along their property that the irrigation district has because of their open ditch. That could be in the backyard of their property, the side yard of the property. And then also our road, which we also have either, as you guys know, either an easement or we own it outright.
Are we making the ditch go away and they're just going to pipe?
Correct. So that they're, they're trying to, there's, from my understanding is there is a lot of water that is, they're losing a lot of water in sediment. So it's actually going in the ground. And so what they're hoping to do, because quite honestly, the irrigation district was set up for a lot of the farm field and ranchers in the area to make sure that they have water there. So they want to make sure that they, their end user, obviously the far end one receives the water. Okay, there's that. On that same day, June fourth, is the road department's first rodeo. So this is where a lot of our staff members will show their skills to see what kind of equipment that they can handle. Now, what this means is it allows them an opportunity to show their skills and then actually get a cert, a higher certification, which then gets them, you know, a pay increase. So we'll have to see how that all goes. But it's exciting. So we'll have a, a day where the road department is focused on training.
Barbecue?
And so this is, you know, this is like, like a lot of other folks that I've worked for is there's like a staff retreat. This is kind of our staff retreat.
So where will this be held at?
This will be at Lake Fork Shop. That's the, the biggest area that we have that would make the sense.
Go out there and use, yeah, that makes sense.
So this is just for staff. This is not out for the public, you know, so we're, we're not asking people to come in and work, work on equipment.
So I'll be in Coeur d'Alene that day.
Uh, let's see. Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention is Chaline Intersection Fifty-Five. Uh, so I forget where the information came from, but there was a discussion where potentially ITD would allow us to lease the, their equipment area there on that, it's actually the northwest corner. So they have a sand shed there. I reached out to ITD. They weren't excited about leasing anything to us at this point in time. So I'm back on the southwest corner, so.
You got any movement from that gentleman?
Oh, the, the gentleman is, I need to get back with him. It's really Idaho Power that has not gotten back with me in regards to if they want to settle it or not. So I haven't heard back from them.
You can make some calls on that one.
If you could help that one. I've did it, I think, three times and I'm, I'm, there's nobody that responded back.
So what about the?
I don't know how it'll pay for it right now.
Well, that was, I mean.
That's another thing. So the deal, yeah, the county, the new yard at Goldust with Idaho Power, is that going away?
That's gone away.
Gone away. Okay.
And they've also, there's another location for what they were planning on doing, so it won't involve the county at all on any of our persons.
Okay, there's that.
Note to call Dylan, so.
So there is, so to go back to the new building on the Goldust, so there is a sand shed that needs to be moved. The contractor indicates that they can move it for a price. So this is where we have some, I'm looking at Doug a little bit. Potentially this might be another change order. If, if you recall, I, I mentioned that we were going to do a bridge crane. Well, that bridge crane, we decided that we should hold on the bridge crane at this point in time. So that wasn't going to be a change order, but I think we need to move the sand shed. So it looks like it would be about eighteen thousand dollars to move it.
Is that what's down here now?
It's currently in the way of the, of the new shop.
Of the new shop? So we just need to scoot it over?
Yeah, we need to, we need to relocate it. So on, on the property. So this is where it.
So it was in the way?
Well, this is.
The plans? And then it's, but it's a change order?
Well, this, it wasn't in the plans because the, we were going to move it separately. And as, as the timeline elapsed and as things got developed and Jeff was supposed to go out and actually dig the hole. And I told him, you don't have time to dig the hole. So this is one of those other items that we were planning on doing to try to help save the cost. And we just can't do it. You know, at least that price seems to be pretty reasonable to, to move. So this is something that we'll end up having to get a, maybe another discussion with Doug to make sure that, that we can do it. I, I was just made aware of it earlier today that they, they can move it, so.
So the sand shed, is it?
We gotta do it, so.
Is it similar to like the states out there at Chaline or is it?
No, well.
Fixed building?
It's, it's sitting on, it was eco block, so it can be jacked up and moved easily. So it's just, you need to have the equipment to do it and the contractor has that kind of equipment available, so.
Be a wise way to do that.
I think we have to go ahead and go through with it, so.
And I would take it out of one oh two. Zero, 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 five, one, three?
Zero, zero, five, one?
Zero, five, one, three. That would be lease of heavy equipment.
Okay.
That would make sense to me.
Okay.
It wasn't on for an action item, so.
Sorry. I just heard about it, so I wanted to make you aware.
It would be, Madam Chairman, it would just be a claim.
Okay.
So you would process it through the claim process and the commissioners would see it then.
Okay, I appreciate that. The other thing that I am struggling with, and this is happening more often, and I, I need some guidance. And this is where we receive a secondary approach to a residential house. In an area where the plat indicates that they have a shared access easement. And what happens nine times out of ten, or maybe ten out of ten, is that the builder goes ahead and builds the house wherever the access is. And then they come in and ask for a secondary access because they have either equipment trailer that they want to park or their camping trailer that they want to park. So, and we are, I'm going through with the prosecutor attorney on another one that has a similar issue. I'm feeling like in, in these particular areas, it's probably low volume, low speed. The risk is probably low. However, I'm trying to follow the guidelines of our plat.
For others.
And it, it doesn't seem like it's ever built the way the plat indicates. Now, in the future, I've talked with Cindy and prosecutor attorneys that on, on these developments that come in and the plat has a shared access, then the, then what hap, what I think should be done is the developer builds the access. So there's no question at where the access is. So a lot of times the builder goes in and builds where, you know, the, the house and the way that, you know, the owner wants. And then they figure out how to get the access. And then they figure out how to get the access to it. Um. So I'm kinda struggling here, uh, in terms of. It, little guidance would be helpful if I should, um, uh, stand o- o- on the premise of the plat and honestly, a lot of the, the houses out there currently go against the plat. So.
So as a real estate agent and a developer.
It's a, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's really, uh, the whole industry is not helpful in this area.
I don't know if we wanna make a decision on this or take it under counsel for today. We're out of time, but.
Okay, sorry.
I, you know, as an expectation, so when I was selling real estate, we looked at plots. And that was the expectation that was set is what was on that plot. Because if you allow a secondary access, now all of a sudden I've got a camper parked right beside my house. And so that's not fair to those people that are actually purchasing and doing their due diligence to make sure. Now, that's where that's gonna come in, you know, that's, that's the expectation set. And so if we come in after the fact and allow a secondary access, I think that we're creating situations where that's not fair to your neighbor. Because that's not what was on that plat. That plat should define where everything occurs. And if it doesn't, we should make them adhere to that.
It, it, it's difficult in situations where the, the house is already constructed.
They did it without due diligence.
And, and.
They're glued to that.
I understand, but that, I'm trying to be, um, you know, some, somewhat. Somewhat, because otherwise, there's far too many there that I would have to regulate. Um, you know, to, to ensure that they are following the plat. I don't know what the right solution is, but I think part of it can be done by any new development that goes in. They build it, period, no question.
Well, I think, you know, one thing it would have in, in my mind would have relevance is how much square footage of frontage do you have? You know, if you have X amount, there's no way you're gonna get a second access, but if you have, this is like three acres.
Or if it's, yeah.
You know, you, you could have two entrances. But I think there's gotta be a.
Or the plat needs to reflect two entrances, you know, they need to determine on that plat what it's gonna be for the future. Cause that's what people are looking at, you know?
Maybe this would be a good workshop and.
That's what I was just about ready to say.
Bring in all the parties.
I'll create one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is.
So we're not doing these modifications for Forest Service grant?
Already did it with Steve.
Oh, is that for his? This is Dan on mine. Okay.
No, he works under Dan, so.
Oh, okay.
Up next is meeting minutes for May nineteenth. I did have a change, or that was.
I can capture them, Madam Chairman.
I did not have any, so I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of May nineteenth. With the changes?
Seconded.
Yes, we moved in second and all in favor? Aye. All right. Up next is the discussion on the annex remodel. Commissioner Thompson, you are on.
Okay, we have, um, have.
I think we may have guests in the audience too that you may want. Uh, this is Dolly Rimples, if I, okay, Joe and Kim.
Yeah, we, uh, last week, we did away with, um, the one. The one bid that we had from, uh, Joe Dolly Rimpel. And, uh, in this week or the last two weeks, I've been working with another contractor and we totally revamped the whole scope of work. And, uh, basically, we're gonna have this set up with, um, Oki's working on a contract. That, uh, gonna have everybody moving in by hopefully September first is our goal. September fifteenth at the latest. And they're gonna bring subs to us and with bids, and we'll deal with all those. So we're basically bringing everything in-house. And not, they're gonna take care of the pavers, take care of the rest, work inside the building. And then we'll have to get a contractor to work on all the parking area. That's the whole sound of the scope of the building.
So Oki has looked at all of this and because you're gonna general it or, um?
We as county be generaling, I'll pretty much be generaling it. And, uh, we've hired superintendent to run all the project. And he'll run the subs. And we'll have electrical, guy doing walls, sheetrock. I think there's two sprinkler heads gotta be moved. Maybe one air duct. We've revamped with meeting with the ladies for two solid weeks. We revamped exactly game plan that we're gonna do. And they're gonna be off and running starting June ninth. He's gonna come in, uh, Brian's gonna bring in a contract to us.
Okay.
To approve. That's where we're at on the building right now. It was, and I'll, and I have to agree with you, Joe, there was, there wasn't enough input from everybody. It was, we just have to get this done. It, it wasn't very well put together, but now we're off and running. I appreciate your input, but.
Well, I'm not exactly sure you can do what you're talking about doing. Can I speak?
Come up to the microphone, give us your name and.
So the, the problem you've.
Joe, if you'll give us your name, please, for the record.
Oh, Joseph Downerple, owner of Downerple Construction Services. We are a general contractor, licensed construction manager in the state of Idaho. As well as an unlimited public works license holder, and we also have a federal license. So the problem you have, and I've, I've done a lot of work with Erstad Architects. This set of prints is basically a first draft. So you've got walls in here that are all called S one, but they're not all S one. Some of them are, um, dividing walls, or not dividing wall, but a partition wall. Problem is, you've got no detail of how to attach this partition wall to the floor so that it doesn't tip over in the future. Now, we know what the details should look like, cause we've done this before. The other problem you have is you have no scope of work. So we have carpet that has been seamed, stretched as near as we can tell. It's done similar to residential where it's on tack strips on the outside, not a glue down. And we took a sample that we found, just a small piece, we took it to Crohn's. It doesn't look like it is a glue down type of carpet, cause it doesn't have a tight enough weave on the back. Um, you have much more than four sprinkler heads that need to be moved. Uh, where both hallways go, both set the sprinkler heads on both sides of the wall. On the one side, there is none, cause if you remember being in the building, it's got these beautiful, uh, soffits around the outside. There's no sprinkler heads in the soffits. Your walls are separating the soffits from the room. Any sprinkler head within four inches of a wall has to be moved at least two feet away. So all of the ones on the office side now have to move, which I believe in the open area, there's about six. And then you have to add to the opposite side. Well, it's pretty simple, except for you've gotta cover all that carpet with remodular plastic, which sticks to the carpet to protect the carpet, cause once you open those heads up, after you drain the system, you get all this black nasty water, which you don't want on the carpet. Other problem is, you got beautiful carpet that can't be matched anymore. So you're taking out casework that was put on the subfloor, and now we're either gonna have to cut seam, tie in pad and tie in something that accentuates the carpet that's there. Or take all the carpet out in certain areas and replace it, which may be the least expensive way to go. But without looking at it and without taking those things into consideration, and the sprinkler heads? I'd have thrown my bid out, and I was going to suggest you do that, or at least let us design, build it for you. So that you got your best bang for your buck. That bid is probably a hundred thousand dollars fat, and here's why. Your sprinkler heads, if the dividing walls are full height, then your sprinkler, uh, addition and moving goes from about four thousand dollars to fourteen thousand dollars. Well, without a scope of work, we have to go with the higher amount so that we can cover, if that's the way it goes.
Right.
Now, an honest contractor will give you back the difference when it comes that that's not the way it's gonna go. And your HVAC system, you have no ERV on the makeup air. So Sean couldn't get up here and take a look at it, and we used the contractors that you guys use that do, do your maintenance. It wouldn't make sense to go to somebody outside, have them come in, do the repairs, do the upgrades, and not know the system that they're gonna wind up maintaining in the future. So the ERV, they've come up with a new calculation on it, and it's X number of tons of heat per person. When you're gonna have a fifty-person occupancy, uh, Sean said, you're gonna have to put in these really huge overrated ERVs. And an ERV, just to break it down real simple, it's basically a heating coil in a duct. So that it heats or cools the outside air that's being brought in. Back in the day, it was never put in. They've only been two people in that office, so they shut it off in the winter. So to reduce the cost on that, there is a secondary that can be used and make the whole HVAC system much more affordable. And that's a carbon monoxide detector. And it's set to a level that when carbon monoxide comes up, then it kicks the ERV in. It allows you to downsize the heating units in the ERV, which make them much more affordable, and that is a much more affordable system. But like Sean said, without any specifications on what you want, we went to the extreme of what the rules and regulations would require for us to bring it up to scope.
And that's, that's what I saw when I first outrolled those, and it was like, the other contractor was looking at us. This doesn't work. And I agree, I've been in this trade for forty-five years, and it's like, oh my goodness, no, it's like, I started, you know, pushing the architects and everybody. So we gotta have something, a scope of work. And it was tough.
Well, and your trim. So all your trim in there is, uh, knotty alder?
Clear alder.
Well, it's.
Most of it. The doors are pretty much knotty alder, but the.
Yeah, and everything that had a knot has been epoxy filled and finished before it was finished. So, yeah, we're taking a look at, okay, we're taking a door out here, we're moving a window there. We've gotta take all of this apart without damaging it. Then we're putting in walls and cubicle walls. And now we have to meet this level of finish. Um, I think my cabinet guy's bid was fifty or sixty thousand dollars. And the majority of it was because of that alder. Now, can we go with something else and bring that price down and stain it somewhere to match? Can we cut down on the amount of trim? Cause that whole building has a chair rail that runs around everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yeah, and it's super beautiful, and I'd hate to, to ruin what you've already bought, but. We've gotta look at the scope.
We've been looking at all that, and you know, what the ladies been wanting for counter heights, and they went and saved this, they went, got them to save a whole lot of stuff. And relocating, you know, different pieces. So it's, it's been quite the challenge to get a scope of work defined. You know, the contractor can go, okay, now I got something I can run with, cause it's been, it's been tough.
Yeah.
It really has been.
And honestly, the best bang for your buck is to develop a scope of work and then run it out through the AGC and get competitive bid. Cause it was advertised, I think, only in McCall newspaper. And then on walkthrough day, nobody showed up, and we're trying to figure out where it's at. And we've got the, the advertisement from the newspaper. She's got something different out of the, the advertisement from the county. And Scott had a third thing. So Scott came down and let us in, he's let us in multiple times. So we can walk everybody through and try to put this together. But we've made no less than six trips down here to, to walk that building with and shoot lasers and, you know, meet with everybody and go over what we could see and what the possible downfalls or pitfalls are.
Yeah.
So if you'd like some help with the scope work, we'd love to be involved. Um, electrical is one that we really need to figure out your layout. Cause you've got all this electrical on the floor, which was very expensive to put in.
We've got, we've got pretty much that laid out with the girls. There's gonna be one wall, it's gotta have some electrical in it. Actually, two, three more of the little short ones under counters. It's gonna be pretty minimal, you know, so that's the easy part.
Yes.
The rest of it's, uh, you know, nuts and bolts, it's gonna be tough with the trim and casework and, you know, your cabinetry.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, yeah, I appreciate your, your input. Um, but right now, I gotta, I just gotta go forward with where we're at, and hopefully we get this thing dialed in and go from there. Aren't you the same guys doing our?
Transfer site?
Transfer site?
Yep, we are.
Yeah, that's what, I thought I recognized the name, I'm going, I know these guys.
Yeah, uh, we grew up, graduated from McCall, and we've been in the trade. Uh, I started when I was twelve with my uncle, and I actually worked for your husband back when I was about nineteen, down in Boise Framing.
Nice.
Worked on the Lucky Peak Power Plant. Yeah, we've been from here to Texas and back. Like I said, we, we do public works and federal jobs, that's our main thing. We just decided that we were tired of being on the road, cause we'd go away for eighteen months, come home, and the whole valley's changed.
Well, it is changing. It's changing.
So, yeah, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Is it, is it okay if I just ask one question, or do I need to come up to your mic and ask the question?
You gotta come up, we're on, we're on tape.
Kimberly Downerple, the other owner of Downerple Construction. I just had a question for Commissioner Thompson. So I listened to the commissioner call last week, heard that you were, uh, just appalled at the price, I got that. And I just wondered, how come you didn't come back and ask us, hey, what would you have done to get the price down instead of going to another contractor to do that?
And yeah, I, I didn't even think about that. I just looked at the price and going, we, we'll never have a parking lot if we don't get this cut in half. That's always, and, you know, Sherry asked me, can you please step in and take over this? And so I have, and I'm just trying to get it done.
That's fine.
And I think I've got a really good guys that are set up to do all this, and I believe they're gonna do a really good job. I've worked with them before, and, uh, I know you guys would do the same, so.
I just wanted to ask that question, cause I thought in your RFP, it did ask for a contractor to come in and help value engineer this. And when you threw it out, we never even got a chance to give you any answers to help you, so that was it.
So that's, that's on me.
The only other question I'd have is, are they public works licensed contractors?
That's a really good question.
Cause they do have to be.
That's, that's in his paperwork that he submitted to the attorneys, so, yep, gotta be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Is there any decisions you need from us, or?
Not really, no, it's, it's in Oki's hands on that part.
So I have some concerns, and I appreciate all the work you've done, but why didn't we go back to Erstad and make them come back to us? We paid them a good sum of money for plans. Why are we letting them off the hook? And same with Clearwater.
Well, I, I had to go back to Erstad, and I called them, I says, these plants don't work at all. I said, I need a real set of prints. And, uh, I said, these, I can't give these to a contractor. And so that first week, I took them all back. I said, I'm not even giving you guys this junk. And they sent me another set of prints, and they were really well done. It was laid out, and it called out measurements, it called out everything. And I took them, I took all the ladies from the different departments. We walked through the whole thing with the contractor.
So what's the new set of plans gonna cost?
There are gonna be a new set of plans, we've got them. We just, we just.
Changes that were made though, there's no fee to change those to construction drawings?
We're just keeping those as they are.
But are there any concerns that?
They're gonna do as belts.
That Clearwater didn't do the RFP correctly? That Clearwater didn't do the RFP correctly? I mean, if there were, if there were three different dates or three different, and, I mean, it sounds like he. Why didn't they go through the AGC bid process?
He should have had a better set of prints when he went to bid, and there should have been somebody on site. Like myself, say, okay, this is what we want. And it took me two weeks of working with them to pare it down to, I got, I can't have this contractor saying, well, what do I do here? What do I do here? And I, I had all the different departments there with them saying, this is what we need here, this is what we need here. And it's all on an ASBIL laid out. So he knows exactly what needs to be done now. And we've got it all written down on the, on the ASBILs, on the prints. So we're, we're off and running. And.
As long as Oki's okay with us not going back out for bid.
Oki's fine with it. Me and him talked, talked through it for about an hour, and he says, we can do this. And we'll be getting bids from each sub. I mean, every sub's be putting bids into us, because all that contractor's doing is just, just, uh, doing like that really. Just project managers.
But make sure they all have a public works license.
Yeah.
And those aren't, they don't have to over, under a certain amount.
Yeah, it's under.
I think it's a hundred thousand.
Something like that, and nothing's going to be over that. That's all I got for right now. Tell Oki to get this set.
Sounds like you've spent a lot of work.
Contractor.
Or not.
I'll go.
I appreciate that, so.
Do you want to look at your new, uh, your new office?
My new office?
Our new office?
Yes, that's for up here?
Yep.
Oh, yes.
The one that City McCall has there at the library? Seventeen thousand dollars for one section, not all three sections, one section. I'd like to foul out my seat. I said, no, no.
That's over a fifty thousand dollar table?
Table?
Wow.
What's his name? Forrest, he was a lot of money and I scored. I'm thinking, you have twenty thousand dollars. To me, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
But when I saw that.
Wow.
No, no. I was like, uh-uh, okay.
Prenomics home.
You want to come over here, get one or scoot over?
Does Scott need to see this to see if we can actually put that up here?
It'll, it'll.
There he knows, okay.
It'll fit. Okay, see which one? I think it's this one.
It's nine?
So it's nine, so we take away four, so you'll have five for.
Yeah, I'm finding it's only, that's nice.
Fine zone and three for us. Um, the one thing that this has, like the one in McCall is just flat all the way across. This one has. This one has, where am I at?
Oh, yeah, nice.
There it is. It's got, you know, shows computers around, but that's. That's what that, I haven't got a price back from them yet. So I'm just waiting on that.
Can, can we do six? I just know P and Z has expressed that it's challenging to have two people there. They would like to have at least four up here, I believe. How is she going to do that with?
This sits nine.
I don't know.
See, this, this sits nine here, so if you guys want it six.
Maybe just for a minute, she can just have a laptop. I don't, I don't know, maybe.
This thing is, um. It's fourteen foot wide. This is twenty-three or twenty-four. So it's coming in about four hundred from that end, about four from this end. It just makes a big horseshoe. It's four foot, it's seven foot deep. So we're talking from right there to come back seven feet.
Before we do this, can we? Can, can you lay it out for us? Because I feel like this person over here is maybe going to be cut off from seeing Clerk Miller.
We can. I mean, we can take some duct tape.
I just really want to do all the work we can to make sure we're happy with it before we.
No, we can take some, I'll bring some masking tape with me next week and we'll just, just mask it. The whole thing out so visually we can have a, you know, sense of what it is.
And then to make sure that the person who sits on that side can still see the screen?
Mm-hmm. It gives you colors. Doesn't give a whole lot of color variation there. You could.
Match the rest of the room.
I'm going to cherry or, or gray.
Cherry. Thank you for finding that. Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was actually my daughter found it. I was, I was getting, I was getting fed up with it. It was like, ah. So I didn't know if you girls liked the idea of that or not, but, um.
Works for me.
I like the way that it has a back to it. So there's a bit of a screen there.
Hold it up one more time. I'm, all of a sudden I'm struggling to, okay. Now I do like the back. Okay, so out here would just be the, okay, got it.
That's this side.
So the back of this is like back here. That's what I'm, yeah, and if we have to, we may have to put a couple more. Deals out on the front of it. We can extend this platform a little bit if we had to.
And I've, I've got to find out, can we get one that has, because it gives you a whole bunch of stuff as far as you can add to it. Can we have something that has power in it so you can just reach?
That'd make it a lot cleaner.
Again, right there.
Make sure Jeremy sees it too before we order anything.
Oh, yeah. I don't know, this is going to be, I don't know, who, who orders that?
It'll be Mr. Scott.
Probably Scott or somebody.
Yeah.
We'll get, we'll get that too as it shows up, Scott.
Perfect, that's exciting.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? That, that is last on our agenda for this morning, so we will adjourn for lunch and be back at one o'clock.